Good evening, everyone. We thank you for coming to be with us tonight. This meeting is now called to order. Our invocation will be given by our clerk, Ms. Kathy Radford, all by her pleads of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today. We know that when two or more are gathered in your name, you are here among us. And we thank you for your presence and we ask you to bless us with it and make us feel your Holy Spirit as we do your work and for the good of all in the community. We ask all of this through Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us again. Number four on our agenda is Black History Month proclamation. We have some individuals who hail from Monticello that we want to give a special recognition. The clerk will read them off course, beginning with attorneys from Monticello.
A proclamation, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Monticello hereby recognizes Farnita Saunders-Hill and Amber Hall, two respected attorneys with roots in Monticello duly adopted and proclaimed this fourth day of February, 2025.
There is an additional attorney. It's Emily, First Lieutenant Emily K. Howell. She is the daughter of none other than Sam Sanders and also attorney, what was that last word?
Amber Hall?
Not Amber, the one before the end.
Farnita Saunders-Hill.
Farnita Saunders is also Sandra and Shirley's sister, hailing from the big Monticello. Okay? Now Emily is presently associated with JAG and she's, she's an attorney in the Navy now and she has done her, she's in her basic training there and I want to let you know she correct-
I recommend Army. We ain't giving them credit.
Mama, is that right?
Army.
Army. Okay.
Too much water to drink.
See there, see there. You know what? Okay. Now, for those people that are not here, we will get these proclamations to them. Amber Hall is the proud daughter of our funeral director here, Al Hall, and his lovely wife.
And the niece.
And, okay, and your niece. Okay, all right, okay. All right, and next we will have our doctors.
A proclamation, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Monticello hereby recognizes the following physicians with roots in Monticello, Dr. Ella M. Webster, Dr. Joseph Webster, M.D., MBA, FAC, and Dr. Ramelda T. Saunders-Jones.
Okay, all right, all hailing from Monticello. In addition, Dr. Elmore Mosley, a clinical pharmacist based in West Palm Beach. Then we have Dr. Carey Comment, an internist and nephrologist in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, hailing from Monticello. Yes?
Mayor, may I add, what's going to say, is the name Dr. Jose Thomas. He passed away a few years ago. He was out in California. He was out, so he was back this morning, passed away, and now he's in.
Okay, was he a doctor or lawyer? He was medical doctor? And what was that name?
Dr. Jose Thomas.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, we thank you for that addition and of course, this list is not conclusive because we don't know where people are or, this is what we know for right now. So let's give all of these great Monticellians a wonderful, wonderful. We thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will proceed for our public comment.
Charlie Hughes. I would make this very short and I'll get to the point. I understand that you are searching for a city manager.
Yes, sir.
Well, I told you, I spoke to you before when you hired the other guy, that when he be unable to succeed, get the chief of police to be the city manager. That's what I'm here for tonight.
Okay.
Asking, asking you to vote him in for city manager and the captain can move up and take his place. There is no one know more about this city than the chief of police. When he was in high school, when he would get out of school, he loved the city. He would change clothes, he'd get there and go to work. I have seen him went on the water and fixed the pipe. He loved the city. And he, it's, it's not that you hiring, would be hiring someone who are learning, he noticing and he is very smart. And I'm asking you guys to hire him to be the city manager. Now, if, I got a question, but you're in the spot now. And one of you think that the chief can't?
No, he's highly capable, that's the thing.
Okay, but put give in the jaw. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right, Chief. Okay, we'll get those proclamations to you or you can stop back by and pick those up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a request. Normally, like I served as the chairperson for the restoration of Old Howard Academy House Town.
Okay.
That face, I guess Rocket Branch Road and Chestnut. I'm also a part of the community of friends that have been doing the May 20th celebration in the park. But this afternoon, I'd like to ask permission to have the celebration of the May 20th on the Old Howard Academy grounds. And so what I would like to propose is that we can close the street on Chestnut Street, which is the end of, on Main, Main Square track, yeah, and Rocket Branch Road. And so it's a, that's block. And so we would have our celebration on the grounds at the Old Howard Academy, or some people say Boys and Girls Club. I've spoken to the chief and we've done it before. We've closed that street off and so we can have people walk back and forth on the grounds and over where the fence is that the old elementary school is. And so it'd be safe for the folks and we'll have security, we'll have vendors and food. And we're looking for, starting at 11 o'clock and be shut down by 6 o'clock on May 20th.
Okay, all right. So you were asking for permission to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Would you fill out the request form?
I didn't know about some requests, that's why I'm here, I don't know what the procedure is.
Well, you just want, you just want the streets right in front of the school.
Right, yeah, Chestnut Street to Rocket Branch Road.
Yeah, she just coordinated with the chief.
Yeah, well, I spoke to him and he said he didn't have a problem with it, but he felt like I'm probably need to come and put it out to everybody and tell somebody really need to come down that street and we don't close it off.
Do we, do we need like an event form filled out like we would for parade or anything like that?
No, it's just like if you close down one section of street for a church function or whatever. We've done plenty of things.
Yeah, we've done it at least three times before.
All right.
And so we're inviting all y'all to come, see what we have. We're gonna have good food now, y'all. Y'all come bring some money. It's a fundraiser.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to approve this?
No, the chief gonna handle that.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all. Bring some of that, bring some money.
Thank y'all. Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Jones.
I'm on the agenda, I'm waiting for that. I shouldn't be, I shouldn't have signed in.
If you're on the agenda and you're speaking as to your agenda, I would wait till then.
All right, don't worry. To, to.
Clayton Tolbert, 231 Ossieville Lane. I added just a public comment tonight, Mayor, because I noticed in item number eight that the city treasurer, report that's been removed. Is any way we can get a budget total tonight from the city treasurer for number eight to see where we are with the city budget midterm halfway?
I would press it for tonight, but if you would like to have one, I'm sure you can be available.
Okay, it's available tonight?
No, you don't need to have that in our agenda tonight.
What record?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
That's all.
Okay, all righty. Okay, moving along to item six, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve consent agenda.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It's been properly moved and accepted that we, our consent agenda is accepted. All business, Mr. Ryan, City Manager's search update.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the council.
Good evening.
Mr. Wingate has indicated that the backgrounds are still being run by the Sheriff's Department or we, internally. We had five semifinalists that were going to run the background checks on, two of which have dropped out. We're now down to Mr. Brillhart, Mr. Schuff, and Mr. Meckelwitz. What I'd like to request this evening is that you add to your February 17th special meeting, an action item to formally invite whoever the background checks reveal acceptable to you as a potential candidate. This impacts the schedule we talked about last month, as the originally planned to have a Sunday reception and Monday interviews and Tuesday council meeting to act upon whoever you select. This is going to impact that schedule. My recommendation, if you concur, would be to move that schedule to March 2nd as a community reception in the evening, March 3rd interviews, and March 4th your regular council meeting, acting on who you desire to be your top-ranked candidate to negotiate a contract and an alternate.
Okay.
So does that sound like an acceptable schedule and scenario?
Do you think all three candidates would be available for that 17th with the background checks?
Mr. Wingate again is hopeful to have the background checks on all three candidates.
Yes, we should, we should have them inside.
They would not be here for interviews at that time, but the interviews would be in March.
That presumably gives about two weeks for the candidates to land.
You give them two weeks to make airfare if necessary.
Yeah.
You need to make formal invitation at that meeting on the 17th, that you're inviting two to three of the candidates.
The 17th or 18th? The 17th is President's Day, that's a holiday.
I believe you have a scheduled meeting, do you not, on the 17th, Mr. Speaker?
I believe it was on the 17th. If that's President's Day, we can of course reschedule it, just need to make sure that this gets out correctly.
Yeah, can we do it the 18th if we don't do it the 17th?
For, for our purposes, the original meeting for that meeting on the 18th was to kind of put a bow on the Montevilla project. It doesn't matter, it just pushes things back today.
Can we just combine the two?
Technically, they should be separate meetings under how the code works.
But we can have two meetings on one night.
Back to the box, yeah, okay.
With your concurrence, this evening, you would hold a second meeting on the 18th. The second meeting, of course, would be to formally invite the candidates to the interview. Two weeks later, on March 2nd, you would hold a community meet and greet in the evening, followed by interviews the next day, March 3rd, followed by a formal vote the following evening on March 4th as to who your top-ranked candidate is and alternate.
Officially with special meetings, Madam Mayor, you're in charge of calling those. So if that's what you would like to do.
Okay, I will do.
Is that an acceptable timeline and schedule?
Can we set a time?
That's the next.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The March 3rd meeting, would you prefer mornings, it's a Monday, to get the interviews over and allow any candidate that's from out of state to leave without having to pay additional overnight stay?
Yes, that would be.
Yes.
Yes.
It says the Monday. Yeah, the tourist development council at 10 o'clock, so we have to do it at noon.
We could certainly start at noon. You may risk having to pay an extra night lodging for the out-of-state candidates.
I can't be in two places at one time.
I understand, being open and honest. Okay? So that would be March 3rd at noon. And then March 4th, your regular meeting would be your action item to select your top-ranked candidate and alternate.
Okay, and the location for the 3rd, March 3rd?
I would guess it would be here in the chambers.
As a reminder, those who need to be publicly accessible, no, so I'd recommend that.
Okay, all right. And, and a social, you mentioned a social on the second.
Early on, the council expressed a desire to have a meet and greet with the community and the candidates. Is that still their desire?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's necessary.
That would be on Sunday evening at whatever time and Mr. Wingate and Ms. Radford would have to arrange a location. I would recommend you posting that as a potential of two or more members being present. That's always a good thing to do.
I would also recommend that at this predictive function, none of you speak to each other on matters that related to the opportunity of this seat. As I do not want to have to try to pick apart multiple conversations. I may adjourn.
Do we have a time for the minutes? Is that March 2nd?
March 2nd would be the community meet and greet, yeah. Again, it's going to be subject to the availability of a location.
I think we could find something.
Yeah, are we looking at 2:00 in the afternoon, 6:00 in the evening, what?
Five.
What's the general idea? A participant at five, okay.
My recommendation would be early evening with, prior to that reception, staff would provide a tour of the city to the candidates from out of area.
On that Sunday?
On that Sunday afternoon. So that prior to the interview, they have a little bit of inkling of things in the community.
But that's not something that's-
That's something you're not involved in.
If any of you are involved in that, it can only be one of you involved in that.
Okay.
My recommendation either Mr. Wingate or Chief Mosley would be the tour guide, one of the two.
Good, okay, thank you.
The next action item, Madam Mayor, is we need to talk about reimbursements for travel.
All right, okay.
We do have one candidate's from Indiana, so there will be airfare involved. Two, Mr. Schoff and Mr. Brillhart are out of area, so there would be lodging involved. We would have lodging on Sunday evening and potentially Monday evening if necessary. Meals and lodging would be associated. And mileage for Mr. Brillhart from his current tenure in Tressant City where he's interim manager.
Okay, okay. Our clerk will take care of that?
Yep, she'll take it.
My proposal is the interviews would be an hour and 15 minutes per candidate. I have already prepared approximately 26 questions that I will share with you the morning of the interviews because they become a public record if I give them to you now. That would be about five questions per council member. Madam Mayor, you would have a sixth.
Okay, thank you.
You would ask the same question for each candidate. You also would get a score sheet that I had prepared that you can utilize and then turn that in to the clerk, probably the next morning if they'll be able to give you time to, to think through what you heard in the interviews. Any questions of me?
Appreciate your help.
Mr. Hughes, doing a, an excellent preparation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Name submission from council members for city charter committee.
I have one name I'd like to be considered and that's Tammy Lester.
Okay.
I have a name, Dr. Vivian Royster.
Okay.
I've spoken with two people that are still considering and once I get responses from them, I'll forward to Ms. Radford.
All righty.
Ms. Berry, would you like to, would you like to be on the city charter?
Okay.
Betty Connor.
Okay, all right.
Mary Berry Connor.
But Mary Berry Connor.
Mary Elizabeth. I been called Betty all my life.
That's it.
Okay, all righty. All righty. Mr. Pittman.
Question?
Yes.
Do we need to decide how many will be on committee?
Well.
I can get nothing covered.
My only recommendation is please keep it an odd number.
Okay, okay, so we have three here now.
I thought we had at least, I thought we had four and two from Brian potentially.
Okay, we haven't gotten his yet. Okay, so that would be-
I have, I have three listed. Tammy Lester, Dr. Vivian Royster, Mary Elizabeth Betty Connor.
We're on the same page.
Okay.
I thought, Madam Mayor, I thought you recommended somebody.
Somebody's.
Vivian Hall Royster. We got you.
Okay.
And one more would be five and that's your odd number, right?
No, two, give me two more.
Two more would be five.
I thought they just, okay.
Madam Mayor, unless I'm mistaken, did you recommend someone?
Yes, I was recommending wonderful, great philosopher, Mr. Pittman.
That's what I thought.
All right, yeah.
So that's-
Would you?
Four.
How many is that?
Four.
Four now. Okay, I'll see if I can draw up one of those too.
Okay, all right. So that would be, would you read those up again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tammy Lester, Dr. Vivian Hall Royster, Mary Elizabeth Betty Connor, and Mr. Pittman.
Okay, all righty, there you have it. Okay, new business, this is the search, CRT radio team, majestic radio system, did I get that name right?
You did just fine, man. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Council, for your time. My name is Bob Jones. I am the program director for the Community Emergency Response Team in the county. Within that team, we have an amateur radio team and we're in the process of setting up a new countywide radio network that would come into play post-big disaster we hope never happens. And while I'm here tonight to talk to you about starting the process of getting permission to deploy small radio devices like this on top of the city water towers. We would deploy this with a drone, so I'm not going to climb your tower and incur that liability. These are about $100 apiece, so I can consider it disposable. If I can't retrieve it with a drone, then it stays there until it comes down. The idea being that these devices will create what's called a mesh network, so they talk to each other and automatically deploy, automatically relay messages. Individual devices like this or this can be carried around. You can send text messages back and forth, it's encrypted. We would make this system available to local enforcement, this level's first responders and stuff like that. What am I missing, aren't I? We understand we might have to talk to home and security, given the water towers are national protected, whatever like that, so I just wanted to try to get things started. I was hoping tonight to get to the point where we can come back with a memorandum of understanding, sort of cover that and get permission to start moving that forward on your two towers. Any questions about technology? I can go as far as you want to go, I don't want to bore you with the gory details.
What data and what is the duration of the system will be in use?
Okay, so we-
What information would be going across?
Okay, the information that be going across, it sends short messages, just like your phone, text message, stuff like that. That data's encrypted, so the idea is that we can hand this out to a first responder or a team, it will automatically send the GPS coordinates back up the line over that encrypted channel, so it's not something the public can get to. And then the-
Well, let me rephrase the question.
Yeah, okay.
Classification of information. What kind of, what, I mean, is this criminal justice information?
No, 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 this is just, we're out after disaster. A big hurricane comes there, we're trying to coordinate all the help to get out to the people. That's all it is, I can nail. This was used to great effect after Helene up in North Carolina and Tennessee. Here's a gentleman that was already working on a business for this stuff, he had a lot of hardware on hand. After that came through, they lost all of their cell phone towers, all of their ham radio towers. They had no communications. If somebody already didn't have a satellite phone, they couldn't talk to them. He had a bunch of devices just like this on the shelf, he immediately jumped into the emergency manager directors, the other people started handing them out. They were literally zip-tying these things, just church teacles and whatever it is, since they all would mesh together, he was able to get communications back into some of those areas within another days as opposed to weeks to get more traditional, I have to have a big tower and that kind of infrastructure in there. So we're looking to have that same capability in the city, in the county. So post-big storm, it comes in and wipes out all the cell phone towers. Those first few days are obviously critical, trying to get some help, out to all people need help. And so we want to be able to have another option in addition to ham radio and things like that that we can deploy within the county. And at this cost, where the search team will maintain the network, if anybody wants to participate in it, then we can help them with devices and that kind of stuff. But right now, I'm just looking at, I want to be able to deploy these kind of devices to your water towers. And like I said, I'm perfectly willing to, yeah.
Couple of things, what, have, are those devices, I know for certain bandlets, you need FCC compliant.
This is not, if this, if these runs on non-hurts, 15 megahertz, there's no license required.
Okay. That was going to be my second question, was are we talking about any kind of interference with any other systems?
This is, this is, no, I mean, it's completely FCC approved, the kind of stuff that's reaching all over the country, all over the world. Other countries have used different frequencies and in the U.S., non-hurts, 15 megahertz is the normal one. That's the old analog cell phone frequency, so those are wide open underneath this power.
And these units operate at one-half watt. Your cell phone is five watts, so-
Okay, so these are really wide power.
Yeah, receiver, wide power, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But they need to be up high so that you can have line of sight communication with them versus, you know, a more powerful radio.
So if a storm or disaster or something happens, then, then, after it's over, the drone would then place it on top of-
Yeah, so we would like to place these normally so we can have the network up and train on it and use it, stuff like that. train on it and use it, stuff like that. But the idea is that I have a stack of these on the shelf, so if the storm comes through and knocks them down, no big deal, I take a drone and I go drop it back out and we will have developed a plan where we can make sure we can cover the whole county. If we, you know, we'll get a lot of it with the water towers that are available in the county and we'll develop a plan, okay, tall buildings or whatever we could deploy to in that kind of a disaster, so we can establish a network very quickly.
Is it a cost to do those?
Uh, it costs about a hundred dollars a piece, but that's, that's something we're working out of our cert budget. So there's no cost to the, to the city, not at all. I'm just looking for permission to deploy it and like I said, the biggest concern is of course liability and I, my MOU would say that I will never, me or anybody would never climb a tower.
Not letting climb towers.
Yeah, also, yeah, I, I've been a small businessman my whole life, I can get liability completely. And, you know, that's not even an option, that's why this is so attractive, it's because I can deploy it to places like that without incurring any liability. And this thing weighs under two pounds, it's about a pound and a half. So it's, you know, there's no danger to anybody here, like Ernie said, it's a half watt, there's no, you know, RF concerns.
Looks like there's a solar panel strapped to them?
Yep, so this guy's got solar panel, that is internal.
So, one more question. The governor declared, uh, emergency on Friday. Do you deploy your tower Friday and once that declaration is ended?
What I'd like to use, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And once that declaration is ended, you get your drone and remove, do?
No, sir, no, we would, we would want, we would want the network in place all the time. I'm prepared to re-establish a network if I need to. So I'd like to, to place these now and be able to use them and train on them and, and work on them and, and I can redeploy them if they get knocked down during a hurricane or something like that.
So it's more for emergency?
It is all about emergency, yeah, that's, that's the main thing. As amateur radio group, I don't know if you've ever met amateur radio guys, we like to play with things like this. And so this is, uh, another project that we're working on and we'd like to deploy it, so we have another tool in our toolbox, uh, come the disaster we hope never happens.
Well, one final question, is the channel always open?
Yes. Yeah, so it would be available at all, at all times and like I said, our, my plan would be to set up, uh, an dedicated channel for, um, the chief if you'd like it, we have one for the cert team and any other interested, you know, agencies in the county, we'd set up a cert and be happy to work with anybody, so they would be ready to use it and be able to use it whenever they need to.
It would be interesting if you can supply some of doc, documentations on the functionality and how it's processed.
Okay, I'm getting, what kind of, what are you looking for and I'd be happy to give whatever you need.
From A to Z, technical too.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk about it. Alright, we can get just basic information on the mesh tasking network and how that works or looking for...
From the beginning, your drone.
Okay.
Deploy it, information you pull in, what's the matter? I'd like to look at it because...
Sure.
First you said it was for emergency, but then you said you want to store it and you wouldn't do.
Well, I apologize.
And that's two different things.
The, the ultimate goal was to have it available during an emergency. But in order to have it available and useful all, for emergency, I want to be able to have it up all the time. So, yeah, my, my goal would be to have one of these sitting on top of the water towers in the county at all times. Uh, we, you know, maybe we'll refresh them at some point, but anyway, my goal would be to have this up there and have that network and we train with it and practice and use it all the time. And what I was speaking of, it's like, if a storm were to take out these, then I could redeploy them very quickly. So it would be available for, for any reason.
So when you say we would train on it, who is the, I know the law enforcement, but...
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, specifically, who is...
So the cert team. We, within, within cert, you know, we, there's all of my members, we will be training with this. If we, we train for light circle rescue as well as other missions and so part of our standard would be to use this kind of hardware to be able to keep track, to pass messages, keep track, and where all my teams are to get time. So we would be training at various times throughout the year, we're always training. And of course, we'd be happy to, to help and train with any, anybody else that wants to. But that's the reason we, and we need to have it up all the time, so I know where the weaknesses in the network are, so that I can plan, were a storm to come through, whatever, okay, you know, down there's a shadow looking like down south of Los Sisikas, there's a big hill, Osceola Shore is always a challenge. I want to have a plan together so that if I need to, I can roll, I can get service into those areas as well.
Is it for profit or not profit?
No profit. We are 501(c)(3), no profit at all.
You don't charge for training and nothing?
Nope, nope, we are, this is, we are the Community Emergency Response Team. So everything, we are 501(c)(3), we no profit involved at all.
And just for the record, I took his course this last month and we graduated on Saturday and we learned about these. It was very interesting and I think it's a great idea.
Uh, as a tech guy, you'll understand, we, we want to have layers and layers and layers. I want to have a Plan C and Z and D and, uh, this is just gives us another, we hope that of course a big storm never happens. If it does, we, you know, we're going to be able to use this if we need to, if we have to. We've got a plan to use ham radio to get all across the county if we need to, but they, that may not be an option at that point.
You can drive it off, the information to the city or you can...
Alright, very good.
Madam, that, that tower down South 19th, that part of the city that's kind of, the water tower.
The water tower is ours.
Yeah, and you got, how many you say it was, two?
You guys have two that I...
We got three.
You got three.
We got one over behind High Hill Mill School there.
The one that's off Fourth Street over there.
Okay, yeah, potentially I'd like to use all your towers and we would look at it and see if, does it make sense within the greater scheme and how far apart are we? Alright, I can get some more information for you, sir. Where do we go from here?
Just curious about you was going to skip the Fourth Street Tower.
Well, I, I don't have any advantage from a technical aspect. If I get the tower, if I get the tower over there, and I don't, I don't know what name you guys use from, the tower that's...
Fourth, Fourth Street Tower, that's the industrial park tower.
Okay.
And, uh, the York Street Tower.
Yeah, the industrial park tower is key to be able to link down to the south and the south end of the county, we've got Jefferson Community Water, they've got two towers, one over towards Vermont, one on Watermill Road, and to be able to get from there is key. The tower, one of your towers in Monticello, I think would be, would be critical. Whether we need to put in the second one or not, it's a good question, that's something we can evaluate for a hundred bucks, it may make sense to, to go ahead and put one there as well. But that would be just, my only thought is, is it necessary to get, to get the coverage that we're looking for?
You have a tower also in McLean also, uh, Pass also, that's DCI, that would work.
Ah, that's a good point, I'll hop spot with them too.
I'll with them too.
I'll do that, have a great idea, thank you, sir. So, yeah, anyway, we're, we're in the beginning stages of establishing a network. I need to get some of these guys up high so we can learn what we don't know and, and deal with that.
So what's the next step on those? Get the information, or you?
Okay. Alright, well, I can do that. I'll have it, I guess I'll get, you can get, or can you send me email addresses or I'll send it to you?
Absolutely. You can just send it to me and I can forward to the council if you like.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
My business card is on the table by that other door if you're, I believe...
I've got your email address.
Oh, okay.
You have a swatch.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kurt Makowitz, zoning amendment request and first reading, audience 2025-01, an audience rezoning property located 123 Nacusa Road.
Yes. Alright, thank you, ma'am. So Mr. Thad Bashir's of, uh, so at this last, uh, local planning agency, um, we, uh, had these two items, uh, Mr. Thad Bashir's of Simpson Nurseries has a three-acre property at 123 Nacusa Road. I apologize, I thought I, I thought I had, um, the paper to show you exactly who that is in here. But, uh, that, that property, I mean, you can see on this map, but it's a three-acre property, uh, at the south, uh, right at the south end of town. It's right behind our, uh, our solid waste, uh, facility and where we have, uh, some dogs and things like that too. And it's just north of a lot of that, uh, Simpson Nursery stuff. And they, uh, it's currently zoned R1 and, um, they're requesting, uh, to, uh, change the zoning to R2, which would be mul-, uh, residential multifamily because they would like to be able to build a multifamily, uh, structure for employees that come from out of state. They have a facility in Tennessee that, uh, employees come from, uh, sort of seasonal and so they would like to be able to build, there's one building on the property right now, they would like to build an additional building that is multifamily to house several different people that are not related in, um, sort of, uh, uh, like having one communal space and then separate rooms for them so that they can come in and out throughout the year, um, and they can just assign them rooms.
Is that really on the cookie? On that property there?
Yeah, yes, it's on Nacusa, yeah.
It's not inside, uh, where you go into the nursery park where they had the plants and it, it used to be a building right on the corner, they tore it down.
Yeah, no, right is, right, so, um...
It's right down the street.
Again, I'm sorry.
It's across the street from that, it's down Nacusa, across the street.
Yeah, so it's, it's just right on Nacusa, there's a little corner, uh, cut out that somebody owns a little property right there, but, um...
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, uh, so this is a three-acre parcel.
Alright, I got you.
Um, and, uh, when it went in front of the, uh, local planning agency, they recommended, uh, to go ahead and allow the zoning amendment from R1 to R2. I didn't see any problems with this and it sounded like a great way for them to be able to provide for their, uh, for their employees. Um, all the, uh, now, the, the building and the plans for that are not a part of this, this is just a request to change the zoning, but those are the plans that they have told us that they, that they have for that property.
Okay. Now, the, it has been recommended, uh, for approval from us, so, and this would be our first reading.
So the local planning agency recommended that you approve it, yes. And, uh, so this is, this would be a first reading of the title, which is provided in the packet, and then, um, there would still be the next meeting is when it would be adopted if it is going to be...
Well, now, so this is an ordinance, so the first reading's tonight, none of you...
No, no action.
There's no vote that we can do tonight. The next meeting, um, you can't hold a vote.
Yeah, there will be, it'll be properly advertised between now and then to let everyone know about that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance rezoning property located at 123 Nacusa Road comprising 3.0 acres within the city limits of the city of Monticello, Florida, from residential single family to residential multifamily district and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Alright, uh, uh, thank you. And now item number two, uh, this one is, uh, 285 Magnolia Street, that is the Calvary Baptist Church. Um, they, uh, what, what they are wanting to do is, uh, they have an expansion that they'd like to do, that's gonna, um, help them, uh, provide a little more seating, some handicap space, um, a covered walkway from, from their parking lot. And then also, uh, with that, uh, there would be, because of the lot, uh, there actually are one, so there is, the expansion would put them over the 50% mark of the, the lot. Um, so that would, is what one variance would be needed for. There is also, they currently, um, have outgrown their parking that's available on the lots. And so right now, uh, Beggs Funeral, uh, they, they, they take on their additional parking and they, they've had this agreement, uh, in the past, that has already existed. And what they're wanting to do is to, uh, continue that and, uh, expand that to allow, because this expansion would add the need for even more parking. So that is what, um, so they're requesting that more parking be added to Beggs, if that makes sense. And then the third variance, uh, would be for setbacks. They have, uh, 25-foot setbacks on a corner in R1. Now, one side is already, um, right there at the property line and then on the other side, there's already a staircase that goes down that close. So they're requesting to pretty much bring more of the building up to that same five-foot line that is on the east side, I believe. But I know there are, uh, there's some representatives from, from the church here right now, and Mr. Morgan is, I'm sorry, I can't, ah, yeah, Mr. Morgan is here too, um, and, uh, recording this, uh, turning off some...
So, one of the issues, and probably the largest issue that we've run into with this particular thing, and, uh, Brian, of course, feel free to stop me if I'm saying too much, is that the Beggs Funeral Home parking is not in compliance with the city code, uh, largely because it was grandfathered in. This additional, which means that instead of having a parking lot, they have grass lot parking, um, and don't have designated spaces and a number of other of those kinds of issues. Now, um, that kind of creates a bit of a problem for us here because there is a strict minimum number of spaces per seat per, uh, the city code. This isn't something where, I mean, we're already out of compliance, we're going to go even further out of compliance with this, uh, that's really the primary issue here. Now, at the LPA meeting, uh, I believe Brian did float the idea of potentially, it's not that, uh, we need to grant a variance for this particular issue, it's that the ordinance itself may need to be changed to kind of address, uh, this parking issue, um, so that we're also not running into a precedent where other business, or I shouldn't say other businesses, but businesses in particular, in addition to other churches or other what have you in the area are growing and they do not comply with the parking requirements. Now, I, I'm not, I, I can't direct you obviously which way to go with this, but my, my concern with this is setting up a precedent of, yeah, we can waive the parking and keep waiving it and keep waiving it and down the line.
So, yeah, I'll just follow on with, um, yeah, I, I appreciate the, the idea of making an exception and, and then having to be stuck with making that exception endlessly, but the, but the fact of the matter is that this, the way this code is written, I doubt there, I, I can only think of one congregation in this town that could, could do an expansion and comply with that, and that's First Baptist across the street. I don't know that anybody else in this town, if they decided to make an addition, could comply with this code. So my concern is we have a code requirement that, that virtually, you know, handcuffs anybody that wants to make a change. So I don't know how to do the order of things, if we can grant an exception tonight and come back with a, a code amendment to accommodate, uh, what to me is really, um, event-type parking. So you've got parking on a Wednesday night and you've got parking on a Sunday morning, which are not peak times where people are competing with shoppers or, or anything else in terms of parking requirements. So is there a way to accommodate churches that need, you know, and want to do expansion without handcuffing them with a, uh...
Can we change the ordinance?
Yeah.
We could change the ordinance through standard ordinance amendment procedures. The problem is, is in order to write that ordinance, we need to know what it looks like. Now, so...
Don't I have a... First of all, I think the precedent's already been set that you grant variance and the idea of however you want to change the parking code, I think you can recommend that to the LPA to review it. But in this instance, I think the church was just giving you a courtesy of how they was going to handle parking. They really just need a variance on the parking, they need a variance on the setback to move forward. Again, this has already been present. When I was on the planning, when, if everybody remembered, the first CVS store down there, the city granted them a variance. When Farmers and Merchant Bank needed their sign, the city granted them a variance. So now, I mean, we have to, as I committed when I was elected, that I would treat everybody fair. I think the church is trying to do a Bible thing in the community, it's not going to harm the community. I would be in favor of granting them the variance and then refer if you on the planning agency, if it's some other code, then you guys work that and send it up the chain. But I don't think we should hold them up.
I agree.
Because, I mean, it's already been set and, and again, we only grant them, you know, very rarely, but this seemed like to be an opportunity, time to do something for the city of Monticello. And it's not going to, you know, cause any more hardship on law enforcement or even detriment to the, to the community, it's something to help the community.
I think the board's support. Our president will support.
You, you gonna make that motion now?
Um, should we do the, the first one first, if you're gonna?
I would just go down the line one by one.
Well, I mean, like, uh, the, the rezoning?
Oh, the, the rezoning, we had the first reading.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, I'll make a motion that we grant Magnolia Street Calvary Baptist Church addition of variance for parking.
Second.
There are three, there are three variances.
I know, but I was gonna say, I said all three, then you said, can we go down the line?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so who can do? If that's the case, I'll make a motion that we grant three variances to two eighty five Magnolia Street Calvary Baptist additional R one project.
That's second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, it's been properly moved to a second, that we will grant Calvary Baptist Church the, um, variance that's necessary for their parking.
That's it, Mike, and minimal lock codes.
Okay, reports from council. Chief Mosley?
Everything's in my executive summary. Um, I also received a, a text from, uh, former member, former council member Troy Verre about the eightieth anniversary for the Boots Thomas Memorial. And it's going to be at, uh, two o'clock on the twenty third of this month. And he was expecting about a hundred and fifty to two hundred people, so if y'all can show up, show up. But everything that else is in my executive summary.
Okay, um, and we want to commend, uh, Chief Mosley in the Police Department, Sheriff Department for the tremendous work that was done uh, for the MLK parade. But, uh, uh, did you notice that a lot of the, there were some ropes put up and then people drove through, snatched them down? So, uh, we need some, some barriers, some real barriers.
And actually, I'm working closely with, uh, my city manager to get the adequate barricades and we have been reaching out to other law enforcement agencies to come and help us, um, with extra security. So, that is already being, um, in play.
Okay, very, very good. Okay, we want our, our officers protected as well as the community.
Excuse me, back to Boots Thomas again. That was Sunday, February twenty third?
Uh, the, yes.
Two P M.
Two twenty three, twenty five at two P M.
Thank you.
There was a lot of damage up in, in that area from the hurricane and we recently went up and reformed the concrete slab. We're gonna be laying some sod down. Gonna get some bleachers up there to get everything squared away for that event.
Alright, city manager.
The, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but they're starting on our water towers, hanging them. And I think we didn't want to get finished, so they'll look a lot better for us. And our solar project is finally completed and signed off on. I know at one time, the city was talking about having some kind of get together over there or something. I don't know if that's something y'all are still interested in. If so, then I will get with the engineering firm and see if we can line something up. Very nice solar array over there. The last thing is, is I'm fixing to make calls, starting tomorrow on setting up some legislative meetings. With some of us going to the Capitol to meet with our representatives. If any of y'all would like to go, you'll contact me tomorrow. And we'll go at two, we'll go two different times to see the two legislators that we're gonna see and I'll start setting those meetings up. And that's all I have.
Alrighty, we're in this area.
Okay, um, I really have nothing other than to ask that, I know we already approved this special meeting for the Montevilla project. I wanted to set the times for that since we're, it looks like we're moving to the eighteen. It's, do we have any recommendations on availability?
I believe flexible.
Normally, we're looking at six or seven P M, so.
If we're back, back meetings, maybe we do one at six and one at seven.
I would recommend six to six fifteen and then six fifteen to onward.
Like it.
Six fifteen being the Montevilla meeting. I don't anticipate there's going to be a lot with that. The period for protests is going to be over with that. And, um, all this is, is, it's a very, very short resolution approving construction to move forward, which for some reason we have to by statute, so.
Six fifteen?
I would say six.
Six to six fifteen.
Six to six fifteen for that one and then the second meeting involving the city manager from six fifteen, I don't know how we anticipate that one taking.
Six fifteen, so.
Is, is that okay with everyone's schedule anyways?
What was her name?
The eighteen.
Eighteen, start at six.
Yes.
Third at twelve. March third.
Yes, March, and that's the other thing, March third at twelve is everyone confirmed that.
And the fourth is the regular meeting and March second is the event.
Yeah, I, I would recommend for the March second event that we let the, um, kind of administrators, uh, sort of arrange all of that. Not everyone has to be there all the time depending on the length of that. We can drop in and out as needed.
And that's the only really the last time. I mean, the council really, it was for the community to talk to the.
Yeah, this is more of a community event. I, I would actually not recommend that y'all kind of sit in council on that particular day.
Okay. Alrighty.
The only thing I have is like, oh, you're going ahead over?
No, I, no, no.
I was just trying to figure out how you would.
He got to ring that bell.
Okay.
I can give my spot if you want to go first.
Well, I had something of a new business, but we went kind of fast.
Okay.
And that was not only the, but the, the new business I had was because what we have done in the past, when we have had these very, very cold nights where we had, had the people drip their water faucets. We have gave some kind of discount, um, on the water bill. And I was wondering, we should try to do that because I know when it's cold weather, it was several days that the elderly had to run that water and that water bill is gonna run off. And so, um, is the system set up in cubic feet?
Cubic something, yeah.
It's in cubic feet.
Well, we, we normally would allow so many cubic feet free just to offset that for the elderly. So, they wouldn't have to pay that high water bill that was.
Well, not only for the elderly.
Well, I say them because most of them are on a fixed income, but, uh, so, I mean, can the manager and clerk get together and see what we can do as far as giving some kind of discount for the, on the water bill? And it would should come out in next month because that.
I don't know if we'll be able to do it in, we won't be able to do it in time for next month because the guys have already read the meters. Well, maybe they still could, they've read the meters, but.
We, we shouldn't be able to.
We should be able to, yeah.
Let's look back and look what we did in the past.
Sorry, I'll just talk that out. We should do that because we've been. And then last thing and then I will be finished for the night. I do want to thank the chief and the city manager for the effort, for the, um, full drive, the chief with security and the city manager for collecting the waste that we do at the church down at Delphi. And we should be back on a regular every other month now.
So, just so that we're following procedures, can you make a motion, please, to authorize the city manager and the city clerk to reduce the water bill?
I'll make a motion that the council authorize the city manager and city clerk to, uh, provide a discount on the water bill for the very cold months of January second.
Alright, all in favor?
I'll just go ahead and donate mine because it passed.
Probably over there gonna take it out.
So, that's been probably moved in second that, uh, the city, uh, manager and the clerk have been authorized to provide, uh, means for, uh, accommodating our, our people across the board for the frozen pipes and for the.
Cold weather.
Okay, cold, thank you, cold weather. Alrighty, okay, now, let me get myself back in order here. Alright, now, uh, council member, uh, Richardson?
I have nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, manager, I remember one, you went up before that, the legislative body reference there, you had nineteen south with the water and that mobile still blocked off down there, you didn't bring anything back because it's still leaking there on nineteen south. They can't even come out the road there.
On my, down here?
Yeah, right down the hill.
That's what I bought up to.
I remember.
The legislators, we, we put in for a grant to put a box cover that down there. And when we go speak to the representatives, I want to have that grant available so we can show where we've applied for the grant to fix it and hopefully they will push it through, through the funding agency, which is D E P. They like to do that instead of pulling it out.
Right.
You know, so hopefully we can get that pushed on through and get some of the, the lift station rehab generators are gonna be included in that too because it's in that grant.
Alright, thank you.
My chief, uh, railroad, South Railroad Street is complete and I know your force field in that area all the time. But, and I know you have vehicles visible, I help, they're using that bad boy for a racetrack. So, just, and spot it, get it on, tighten them up.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank the chief for, uh, being proactive with event safety, uh, that, that come up, you know, something we thought about with the Christmas event. And, you know, with things that happened over New Year's in New Orleans and everything, I just wanted to thank you for being proactive with that so we can continue to do events and, and enjoy them and still be able to protect our people.
Okay, and I have another one for chief also. Uh, there's, uh, I think two bumps on Branch Street, speed bumps. Well, it looks like, uh, wonderful people, uh, make that detour on May Street and to keep flying on down the road. So, we appreciate if you would check that out for us also, please.
No problem.
Okay, alright, so that concludes the council member, uh, member reports. Okay, next meeting is March fourth, twenty twenty five.
We have some special meetings.
Well, we have our.
I'm telling you, you're gonna shoot us an email, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay, okay, and we appreciate everyone who has come out tonight and to be with us. And we have gotten quite a bit accomplished, so we really appreciate it. And let you, we want you to know that we are here to support you, to, you are the reason why we're here. And we want to do our, 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 our duties towards you. So, if all hearts and minds.
Um, Madam Clerk, you, 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 you deputy clerk, you got a new deputy clerk, right?
Yes.
And you're?
Yes.
So, since the deputy clerk returned once before, I'm quite sure she'd be a great help to.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, alrighty. If all hearts and minds are clear, do I hear motion? So adjourn.